Hello.
Hello, good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, and Neil, Neil's, okay. So we're good.
Was Chelsea coming this morning?
Chelsea will be here, she's running late.
Okay.
She just called and said pushing the kids out the door has been a challenge this morning.
Oh.
Oh, I am not good at impressions and accents are horrible. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'm gonna call this meeting de-order. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I know we have some citizens here in the room and at least one who wants to speak. Andy, you want to take the podium? Thank you, Andy Shank.
My name is Andy Shank. I'm with the Better Bus Coalition. First, I wanted to congratulate Daryl on his retirement and thank you for your service in all the years that you've given to Metro.
Thank you.
As a rider, I appreciate all of the innovations that have come in the past five, six years and it means a lot to see the energy and the investment in the system. And second, I just wanted to, I might not be able to stay for the whole meeting, I've got the little guys here with me, but I just wanted to thank you for taking into consideration our proposal for changing the fares for children and I look forward to hearing what you discussed today. So, thank you.
Thank you very much and they're always welcome here. I'm especially glad that there are cupcakes over here that they could enjoy, so I hope they like them. Thank you, Andy, and thanks for all the work that you're doing. Appreciate it. All right, so, yeah, so.
You can skip that.
Skip that, well, as part of my chair update, I am not gonna go over all the points of Metro on the move as I've been doing so many times and taking away what you got to say because I want to keep you talking and engage with Metro for every last second that we can. But I do want to note on Wednesday, we had a great celebration of Daryl Haley, our amazing CEO, and so many people turned out. It could have gone all night with people just singing your praises and talking about all you've done for the entire region and for Metro. And I don't think I could say everything this morning to encapsulate it all. I think you all know it, but to take us from where we were, I mean, struggling to handle basic items to the best bus system in the country, that's gotta feel good. And I gotta say, it's felt good knowing you for all those years and working with you for all those years. And I think the big thing that so many people said was your influence, your impact on the transit system, the city, the region is gonna keep going on for many, many, many years. And I can't thank you enough, Daryl Haley. Congratulations on your retirement and we have a proclamation. I'm not gonna read it all, I don't think anybody wants me to. In fact, I was told if I read the all the whereas statements at your retirement by a certain former mayor that he would throw something at me. He didn't say he'd throw something at me, but he told me, he made it clear I should not. But this documents out in detail all that you've done and we just want to celebrate you. I don't know if any other board members want to share any comments to Daryl, this would be a good moment.
You know, it's been difficult hearing all the praise that's been thrown at me because I haven't really done anything. And I've said this before, it's not the me, it's the we. We found a way to come together and put the citizens of Hamilton County first, put their needs first. Every operator, every mechanic, every admin employee, the most amazing leadership team, put together on the face of the earth. The most amazing board members, elected officials, business community. We did this together and I can't imagine the things they'll do once I'm gone. It's been my honor to serve.
Mr. Chair.
Daryl, I've said this to you privately and I'll just be brief here. I just want to thank you not only for everything that, you know, Blake has already mentioned, bringing this transit agency to where we are today, but also for assembling the team that you have assembled over the years. I could not agree more. You have left this organization in such good hands with this incredible Metro team from across the system and I think that is one of your greatest contributions. So, thank you for that and I truly hope you have a relaxing and fun summer ahead and retirement for many years to come. Thank you, Daryl.
Mr. Chair. Daryl, I believe you when you say all of that, I do. But what I want to note is there was a point five years ago, six years ago, when a whole host of us were going out trying to explain to folks why we needed to tax ourselves to invest in transit and you stepped into this role and gave this organization instant credibility. And that credibility mattered so much when we said, "This is important, just call Daryl, he'll tell you. I'm not sure about this, just call Daryl, he'll tell you." And without you in that spot at that time, we're not here doing all of this. And so, well, Sarah is right, you've built an incredible team, well, you are right, so many other people did so much of the day-to-day operations. Your credibility is why we are here today. So, thank you so much, I will miss you, but don't stop taking my phone calls. Thank you.
I'll be brief too, Daryl. I think all of us agree that your leadership is characterized by collaboration. And in our region, it's refreshing to have collaborative leaders who they don't, you don't generally think of whether you're a city person or a county person. I think we all know over the decades, there have been reasonable disagreements between different jurisdictions and those disagreements are, it's a different story now. I think you're part of that story. You're at the center of that story frankly, and the professional development. It makes it awfully easy to sit on a board when there are professional people all around you, not just in your chair. So, we appreciate all the leadership you provided us and thank you for your service to the city and the county.
Daryl has requested that we move on because he says he doesn't like all this attention. I'm never fully convinced, but no, you know, you can always come back to all the board meetings or anytime and we will continue to praise you in case you miss it. And just so you guys know, Daryl is with us for several more days, so keep him busy, keep those calls coming. And please, you know, get one more moment in with him if you can before the end of the week. All right, let's move on. We have to approve the board minutes for April 22nd, 2025. Moved and seconded, all of in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say left. All right, the minutes pass. We have a presentation on fare increases and let's get started with that and I think we have an action item as well.
Good morning, I'm Dave Etienne, the Director of Marketing for Metro. We were here, I was here before you last month to show you what our proposed fare increase was and our outreach plan for that. To start today, I'd just like to recap what the actual proposal was that we put before you then. That was increasing the local routes to $2.20 or $1.10 half fare. Express routes, $3 or $1.50 half fare. And make it very easy for our riders to differentiate which type of service and what their fare would be. Anything that does not have an X in the title of the route name would be a local route. And conversely, anything that has an X would be considered express. That would bring the fare deal and MVP monthly sticker price to $44. The access one-ride ticket would be $4.40 and the ticket book of 10 tickets would be $44. The Metro Now one-ride price would be $2.50. We also propose to increase the cost of day passes and 30-day rolling passes commensurate with the local one-ride fare and the express one-ride fare. Next slide, please. We also are proposing and we're going to implement a program called Ride and Save that basically in the industry, it's known as fare capping. And what it does is it guarantees that customers will never pay a higher fare depending on how many times they ride. So, basically, if they ride two times within a 24-hour period, any other rides that they take within that 24-hour period, it will be automatically converted to a day pass and they will no longer have to pay any additional fare. It'll work the same way for a 30-day pass. Once they ride the number of times that equals the cost of the 30-day pass, any other rides taken within that 30-day period will be free. And we feel that that is a great way to blunt any potential impact that a fare increase might have and it actually rewards our frequent riders by giving them free rides the more they ride. Next slide. You also may remember that we launched on April 16th, the Rider Rewards Program. That works very similar to many other rewards programs that all of us are probably taking part in right now with local restaurants or retailers. And basically, three times a week, whenever you ride, you can earn points that you can put toward purchasing additional bus fare or you can buy gift cards at local retailers and we're continuing to add more retailers to that list every day. So, we did a pretty intense study of what the ridership and revenue impact would be from this fare increase and we actually would see a revenue impact of additional $676,000 from the July 16th implementation and the full year impact would be 1.3. We did also a ridership impact study and there's something called the Simpson Curtain Model that basically postulates that you would, you should expect a decrease in ridership for every five cents that your fare goes up based on a fare elasticity model. But because we are implementing the Ride and Save Program and the additional Rider Reward Program, we felt that the impact on ridership would be negligible, probably in the 0% to 2% impact. And as we increase service and improve our customer experience, that will naturally increase as well. So, we talked about all the meetings that we were going to be having last month, so this is just a recap. We did an in-person meeting on April 16th and we did two virtual meetings on April 17th. Throughout that period, we solicited feedback on a written comment form at the public meetings. We also had that comment form posted on our website. We invited people to send us emails. We also always are open to receiving comments via US Mail and fax. And we also were taking calls at our customer care center. And we had a 10-day open feedback period, so from the 16th through the 25th, we were able to accept customer comments. We promoted this outreach extensively. We had a public notice in the Cincinnati Inquirer, we sent out two news releases to local and regional media. We had a banner on our website that linked customers to our fare restructuring page and that press release and landing page together generated over 6,000 visits. We had a number of social media posts across all social media. We also placed a banner ad on the Transit App, which shows up anytime you open the Transit App. We had the public meeting recorded and we posted that on our website throughout the comment period for those who could not attend. We also sent out two emails and text alerts, reaching over 20,000 subscribers. We also featured it in our Metro Go! info newsletter that we send to over 21,000 recipients. And we placed information on the digital screens on all fixed route buses, promoting the public outreach and then after the public outreach, promoting the comment period. Just a little bit of information about the earned media that we got. That's publicity, that's what is generated without a cost associated with it. The news release that we sent out generated 12 mentions across television, online and radio. They focused primarily on Metro's consideration of a fare increase in response to the inflation that all of us are experiencing. The top media outlets that ran this information were WKRC and WVX UFM. The overall media sentiment was actually neutral, they really didn't have a negative spin to it at all. And the potential reach from this earned media was almost 12 million people. And by using an estimated advertising value equivalency formula, we determined that this was worth about $110,000 of coverage if we had purchased TV and radio spots to get the same information out there. So, what did we, who did we talk to and what did we hear? The in-person meeting had 34 attendees, the virtual meetings had 113 registrations and we received a total of 80 comments. Those were broken down by written 20, online 58. We received one email, we received zero mail and fax, which is not surprising to me, and we received one call to our customer care center. And those have all been compiled into a summary report that I believe you all have now. What were some of the things that we heard? There was moderate support for most of our fare restructuring recommendations. People really do understand the impact of inflation as having on everyone's daily lives. There was actually very strong support for consolidating the suburban and express routes into one fare and the Ride and Save Program was very positively looked at as a way to increase fairness and encourage additional ridership. Several did mention the importance of improving discounted fare access for young riders, which we heard from one of our customers today. Some affordability concerns were raised among a subset of riders, particularly regarding any increase in base fares and as someone who's been involved in a lot of fare increase discussions over the years, that is a very common theme that you'll hear. Again, that same sentiment was reflected in comments opposing fare hikes in general and calling for broader access to low-income programs. Multiple respondents requested such things as credit card and mobile wallet acceptance, which suggests that we have to continue to push for modernization in our fare payment and fare structure. Just one slide from our feedback that we received basically sort of condenses the overall sentiment of this. The question we asked is, "What is your overall impression of the proposed fare restructuring plan? The choices where it will make riding Metro somewhat easier, it will not make riding Metro easier, it will make riding Metro more difficult, or it will have no impact?" Next slide, please. If you combine the "it will make riding Metro somewhat easier" with the "it will have no impact", we had 61% over half of the respondents felt that way. So, I think that is a very positive reaction to something that isn't always a positive decision. So, what are our recommendations based on all of this feedback and all of our studies? The fare restructuring plan that we proposed to you back in April should be implemented with one exception. We propose to update the child's fare policy based on the customer feedback that we received and it would basically entail that children under 55 inches, which if you look at the CDC and the World Health Organization guidelines, the average height of a 10-year-old is 54.5 inches and that's regardless of their gender. So, if you make the child fare under 55 inches riding free with a paying adult, that pretty much covers the 10-and-under age group. We would keep the policy the same with regards to children riding with a per fare paying adult and children over 55 inches would pay the full fare. And we would retain the height enforcement marker on the bus as a way to minimize confrontations between operators and passengers because there's really no way, short of carrying any kind of identification, for an operator to verify the actual age of a child. We will replace the 35 and 45-inch yellow markers on the buses currently with a sign at the 55-inch line so that it will be very easy for the operator and the customer to determine what fare their child, or if their child should pay any fare at all. And that is it, thank you. Do you have any questions?
First, thank you to staff for the thoughtful approach to the child fare policy, I think it's a good improvement. The one question I have is around cash payments and how we hope to transition people from cash to using our various platforms so they get the benefit of the rewards program. Because if you assume someone's paying cash, they're likely to be paying 2.25 because a quarter is easier to find than two dimes. What will our strategy be to help those who are currently paying cash get into this program so that they can have the benefit of the 2.20 rather than what is likely to be a 5-cent tax on paying cash?
I didn't go into much detail, but one of the ways we'll alleviate that concern is through a smart card that customers may purchase for $5 a one-time purchase fee, which will allow them to load cash onto that card. And that way, it will function just like if you use the app. You don't have to necessarily have a bank relationship, you don't even have to necessarily have a smartphone or an internet connection. You can go to our sales office, buy a smart card for $5, load it either at the sales office or at any number of retail locations throughout our service area and then just tap that on the fare box every time they ride. It will participate in the Ride and Save Program as well, so that they can take advantage of the capping that will occur when someone uses the app.
And what's our strategy to help them go from paying cash to getting the smart card? Whether it's advertising with cash riders or what's the approach there?
Well, we will certainly do a tremendous amount of marketing and outreach and publicity to promote that at all of the events and things that we're at, as well as paid media. And then there'll be, you know, I'm sure, additional ways to get that message out. And I think that once people see the advantages and the benefits of the fare capping program, the Ride and Save Program, they will naturally migrate over to that.
Could you remind me of the scope of the retail network and those opportunities to get cash on the cards?
Yeah, currently, we are working with Masabi, who is the provider for our fare payment through the app and they have agreements with CVS, Walgreens, Family Dollar Stores and Speedways located in our service area. And our hope is that they will actually expand that network and add more retailers as we go.
That's helpful. I would encourage us to be as creative as possible, even as simple as like having a business card to every cash payer that the operator can hand them and say, "Hey, did you know you can get into this program?", something to make it really transformative.
There will be a lot of on-bus promotion for it as well.
We just, Mr. Metz, we just plan on educating the riders as well continuously with this new product.
Yeah, and it seems to me that a lot of riders would think that only at our kiosks or something would they be able to add money and that it seemed limited. That's where my question is, like making sure that people can do it in their community, where they live, with relative ease, so.
We've actually gone out and tested some of those locations just to make sure that they're aware of the program and how it works and we've actually had very good results, so that's encouraging.
Thank you.
I'm kind of worried in terms of the smart card, I mean, considering sort of the promotional period where maybe, you know, there's a sort of set-up of elements where.
Absolutely, we will.
Will those smart cards only be available at the kiosk? Is there only one location you can purchase a smart card or will they also be at locations where you can load them?
Currently, we're only going to sell them at the sales office, but that's probably just something we're going to do as we start the program and get people acclimated to using it.
If I may just make one additional note, the smart card is really mainly for those who do not have smartphones or access to Wi-Fi, so they can't use their app. But if you have your app, come July, you will take advantage of what we call the ABT, Account-Based Ticketing. account-based ticketing. So just a smart card, you can put 20 bucks on your app or 30 bucks. And each time you ride, you scan it and it deducts the $2.20. But for those who don't have a smartphone or don't have, you know, a credit card, then they will use the smart card option.
So we're confident that most riders would be using the app, right? And so a lot of the concern is with the unbanked and making sure that they have the opportunities to the programs as well.
Correct. And you can, to Haled's point, you can use the smartphone without having a credit card or a bank account. Because you can, once you have an account, you can go to one of the retail outlets and hand them $20, and then you'll have $20 in the app.
Okay.
So it's not, so cash-paying customers can use both the app or a physical smart card. So, you know, the point is that there'll be, hopefully, a very small percentage of folks that will actually need the physical card. If you think about the universe of folks, there are some that have a smartphone but may not have a credit card or be unbanked. Those folks can still use their phone.
Okay.
Can I make some recommendations on our ERM, our merchants, working with their clients and customers in terms of that, helping with that education and access?
I have one other question. Interesting to see comments about express route and kind of an opportunity for fare simplification. I think that was unanticipated, right? So we haven't taken any action with that. Didn't you say there was a desire to simplify our fares and...
The sentiment in this particular case was a result of saying that you don't have to know if you're on a suburban or a Hamilton County express route to know which fare you pay. Anything with an X will be one fare. So we're continuing to bring the fare choices down to the minimum number that a customer... And this is probably mainly addressed to new riders who are uncertain about, you know, what route am I riding and what's my fare going to be?
Gotcha. That was a reaction to the simplification.
Putting an X in the definition of what is express is one fare. That pretty much solves the question right there.
Gotcha. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Yep. All right. We have an action item.
So we can go through here, the first action item. We've gone through, Dave went through a nice summary, and we've had our questions. The bottom here, we recommend that the board here approves the fare changes effective July 16th, as detailed by in Dave's presentation.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Drehouse, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion or additional questions? I think this is a roll call.
Ms. Samot?
I'm so sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I, um...
Sorry, Neil.
Sorry. I know I had a chance to comment, and I missed that chance. I have been really uncomfortable with the feeling that voting yes on this would feel like we're passing the inflation buck down to our consumers. I can't, I also, on the other hand, can't think of a reason not to do this financially for fiscal responsibility, so I'm not going to like make a strong pitch that we don't pass this. I'm just going to personally be voting no. I just want to get that out there.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Samot?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Neil, for articulating that voice. I think a lot of us are concerned about raising fares, and I'm glad you brought that point out. So, thank you. All right. Next on here, we have the proposed resolution for a contract modification for advertising agency services. If you look at this, we are very much getting in line with the calendar year, so this is a modification to extend out the services through this year. So that'll get us in line with the budget. I don't think there's any changes to the amounts or anything particularly of note there. We do have staff here that could give a presentation on it if there are any questions, or we can move forward with this contract modification. So wanted to check in with the board and see if there are any questions or any need for explanation, or if you would like a short presentation on this. If not, I'll move forward with it. So can we go to the action item? Are we on it? Okay. So I am going to move that we approve the contract modification for advertising agency services. Properly moved and seconded. We are not on a consent agenda, so we've got to do these one by one today.
Ms. Samot?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
All right, thank you very much. We also have a contract award to the city of Cincinnati, yes, for Gladstone Avenue street repairs. This is a collaboration between the city and sort of Metro to do some needed street repairs. You can see the total value is about $112,000. Any questions or concerns on this approval? Yeah. You'd like the presentation?
Who am I talking over? I thought I heard somebody else. Okay, sorry. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't interrupting someone else.
No, you're good.
I just would like a little more elaboration on what the project was and what it entailed.
Fair enough. Okay, could we get a presentation on that?
Sure. To hit some of the highlights here, a few years ago, so the city assessed part of our rail right-of-way along the Oasis Line as part of a larger project, approximately $4 million, that the property we own needed some resurfacing. That takes engineering work, assessment of risk, scope of plan, and the work itself. We agreed to reimburse the city for the cost of the paving. What's happened here at Metro is that happened, say, three years ago. And it was on our radar, it was going to hit the budget. City work takes some time, and now we've gotten this finishing that, reminding Metro of the agreement, which we did, and Metro staff at the time made that pledge. So it was budgeted at the time, this is, again, two, three years ago, and reflects our commitment to the city to pay for that reimbursement. It's $112,000. At the time, estimates were about $98,000, $99,000, so right on that board threshold cutoff. But we really appreciated the city engineering services. There was no dispute that the work certainly needed the repair and the repaving. Really thankful to have had the city as a partner to do really all the legwork and the tough work, but we made the pledge to reimburse them for the costs several years ago. That bill's come due, essentially.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, it was about part of a $4 million.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. I'll go ahead and move the passage of this.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. Last chance for questions or comments. All right.
Ms. Samot?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. Motion passes. And let's move on to financial results for April.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. And we're going to go first to, in the interest of time, just go to the wall of numbers. Daryl, this is your last month, so we're going to your wall of numbers. I know we, you and I both have this crazy love and fondness for these numbers. I was talking to Pete earlier, and he was trying to show me this visual chart. I'm like, Pete, you've got to just, I'm a numbers guy. None of these fancy graphs, okay?
I like pictures.
Yep. Their pictures are okay, but not for something like this. So we're rolling along here. Wanted to highlight, this is the first month that we do have our sales tax actuals for January. So the January actuals came in, we booked those in April. They came in about $110,000 less than what we had budgeted, but almost $400,000 greater than last year. So all in all, you know, we consider that some good news. And want to refresh everyone's memory, I know we just had the Memorial Day weekend, but let's keep in mind that January had some snow, and we also had some cold. So we had those two weeks in the month that really had some inclement weather. So pleased that the outcome here was pretty much spot on to the budget, maybe slightly less. When we go to our revenue line on the left side, total revenue came in at $13.9 million. That's a little bit less than we budgeted by $176,000. Primary drivers of that would be the sales tax that we had talked about earlier, along with the fare revenue coming in a little bit less. Then that was offset by the CPS revenue coming in at greater than what we had anticipated. Looking down now at our expenses, they came in basically flat to the budget at $13.6 million. Some ups and downs on that one, with the wages and benefits were down slightly due to the vacancy and the change in the accrual for workers' comp and health insurance that we have talked about, offset with some added spend in maintenance along with some advertising. Netting those two down to the bottom, you look on the left side, we came in with an operating capital contribution of $290,000, which was a little bit less than the budget by, call it, $168,000, $170,000, $160,000 right there. But really want to focus on the right side, everyone, on Daryl's last meeting. You look at the bottom, our year-to-date actual operating capital contribution is $725,000. We had planned for a loss for the first four months, so we have $1,000,001 as a favorable variance to our budget. And so what I can say is Daryl's leaving us with some wind in our sails. Thank you, Daryl. You've done an awful lot, and you're leaving us with $1,000,001 in our hip pocket for the rest of the year. So thank you. Any questions from anyone here in the group?
I had a question on parts and supplies. I know that that figure can be volatile month to month, but, you know, $244,000. And I think some of the factors that might be affecting that are in the news daily. How concerned are we about that affecting us long-term?
You know, I think, Mr. Etheridge, every unfavorable variance is a concern until we dig into them. I think when we look at this, some of it is timing, in which we just don't know exactly when the maintenance is going to occur. But there has been an increase in the cost of some of these items. So we're taking a close look at this. And Bill, here next to me, he and his team are looking at the maintenance organization and the cost associated with it. It's not something, it's something we're focused on. It's not something that we're alarmed by, right now, I would say.
Okay.
But we are keeping a close eye on it.
Thank you.
And I would say that that also goes hand-in-hand with our ability to control our expenses when it comes to our hiring. So we're doing a really good job on that, and that's one of the reasons we didn't kind of bottom out, too.
Any other questions, comments on the financials? Hearing done, I know everybody's eager for the BRT updates, so please take it away. Haled, Bill?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Several weeks ago, I think the last board meeting or the one before, it was requested, you know, to have an update on the BRT, which, you know, was good timing. We were planning on having one after our stakeholders advisory committee meeting, which just occurred last week. And as you will see from Sharon's presentation, we're keeping everybody pretty busy, whether they're part of this organization or from other organizations as well. I'll turn it over to Sharon. All right.
Hi, all. I'm Sharon LaCombe. I'm the senior director for Bus Rapid Transit Planning and Design. And we have been exceptionally busy over the last several months, getting input from the public as well as project partners and project stakeholders. So all in all, for our public engagement for just the last six months, we have reached over 2,779 people with 64 events. That is about half of what we've done in the last year. So we're really running on target about, you know, getting great feedback, about 500 to 600 people in a month personally touching them. This does not include the numbers that we have in terms of the overall surveys that we've been doing and input that we get from our outreach on our site, on the website. But this is literally in-person talking with people about the proposed BRT project. Next slide. Our focus has really been on for the design of the stations themselves. So we have, in order to advance the project, we have been out engaging with the community as well as stakeholders on where the precise location of the stations will be. So during the planning process, stations were identified based on low income, transit dependency, the coordination with other routes, coordination from an operations standpoint with our transit centers, and being able to provide the most efficient and effective service. From there, it was really a dot of an intersection of two places. But since we've been working with the community in the last year, what we've really been focusing on is where precisely those station locations, platforms would be located. And most of the stations that came from the planning process, we are very much right on target with where they were proposed. We have a couple that have slid based on engineering concerns, just a little 75 feet up the street or down. And then we have a couple that we've moved very minuscule, same manner, to help accommodate other projects. And that's been a concern that we've gotten, and input that we've gotten from stakeholders. So we really were on target from the planning process, which is good news. And we are still on target for moving and advancing the BRT from their stations. As you can tell from the numbers, we've just done a ton of outreach, and we've gotten really great input, not only on where the stations would go, but what they would be deemed. So we want to make sure that we've reached out to the community, we had an online survey, and we got input. There were about, I think, eight stations that the name was changed based on what the community told us. One of those, for example, we were referring to the downtown station Riverfront. We're now going to call it the Banks. That was something that we heard overwhelmingly from the community, that that's where they associate with the Riverfront. Next slide. And next slide. I mentioned project stakeholder input. So project partners are folks like the city of Cincinnati. Matt is here with us. He is the BRT project manager for the city. And they are our largest stakeholder, or project partner. We have other project partners in the area, like the city of Mount Health and North College Hill, Ohio Department of Transportation. Of course, the Federal Transit Administration is one of those. So we are continuing that conversation. But stakeholders are landowners, or major employers, or universities, education centers, major destinations where people are going. And so we've had a number of one-off meetings with project stakeholders to get their specific input as well. Next slide. During our initial outreach in the fall, we did hear from some of the communities that the station platforms, not necessarily the length, because the length is set based on the size of the vehicle that we have, but the canopy could, can be smaller. And in our neighborhood business districts, it's important to not create a visual barrier. And so our architects went back and created for us a neighborhood business district station rendering. So that canopy, instead of being closer to 50 feet long, is 20 to 25 feet. So we always said we could scale it based on the existing location. It helps to minimize those visual impacts, but it also... It helps to minimize those visual impacts, but it also, I just want to make sure that we're all clear, we still will retain ADA compliance even with that smaller station. It just requires a little bit more grading to make sure that we're at the same degree of an angle that we need to be so that it's safe for wheelchairs and other motorized vehicles. Next slide. We do have an updated animation that adds that. Click one more time. There you go. This animation would be in North Colli, in Northside, sorry, it feels like a Monday morning, it's Tuesday. And this is what we would call a bump-out station. The vehicles here would stop in mixed traffic, although with transit signal priority, the traffic light behind us would be red, which would not therefore create an impedance of traffic. Folks board generally about 15 seconds, which is about half the time that a normal fixed route bus would be, and then it's off and running. These are the side platforms. This is an animation for Avondale Town Center. In this area, we would be able to have a bus-only lane that could be used for buses. It could be used for turning right into businesses, so the regular passenger cars could enter. And the bus lanes also could be used by emergency vehicles when they're on an emergency trip. This again is the side platform. Now we're moving to the center platform. These are designed for areas where there is more street right-of-way width, so that we can provide that pedestrian refuge at the middle point between each side of the traffic. University Cincinnati, Cincinnati State have been proposed. We are examining the use of side platforms in the university area as well as in Cincinnati State, based on some stakeholder input that we've received from both of those institutions and will be doing some additional traffic analysis and going back and having additional conversations with those stakeholders. Next slide. From a project timeline standpoint, we have been advised by the Federal Transit Administration that they wanted to see a lag between the projects. They are two separate grant applications. And so we will be pushing the Hamilton Avenue out about six months. And that is shown here on the slide. That still gets us to operations for both lines for 2028, one in early 2028, one in later 2028. Next slide. And then the other thing that we've been doing while, since we last met, is reaching out and talking to the contracting industry about this project. We have made the decision to go with a construction management at-risk delivery method. And with that, and with contracting across the United States for these types of projects, we do need to make sure that we're engaging with the industry and getting as many people interested in bidding on the project as it comes due. So we have issued two notices to industry, one in the fall, one again in April. We did also host a second Small Business Networking Event and a C-MAR Procurement Information Session on April 30th. We had about 65 different businesses. Of those, eight were prime contractors, local contractors. And then they had the opportunity, after our presentation about the project, to network together. We are anticipating a request for qualifications to be out in June so that we then could begin the pre-construction activities and have a contractor onboard so that they can start looking over design plans and saying to us, oh, if you do this, this will save money. These materials, you know, are less risky right now. And it's all part of that at-risk delivery to help keep the cost lower. We are still onboard to complete NEPA and we would come back to the board with input on the firms that have submitted a proposal. And then we would be seeking board approval of a contract later in the year after the president's budget includes our projects. So with that, I'm happy to, Halle and I are happy to answer questions.
So, first question. December of this year, the board would be asked to approve a contract for, tell us exactly what would be in that?
For a contractor for construction management at risk. And so the first part of the contract, it would be phased into two. The first part would be pre-construction services, so that's your real estate, any utility coordination. It would be reviewing the cost estimate and the overall schedule to make sure that when it is ready to go out, they also prepare construction bid documents and specifications for us. And then the second phase of that procurement would be the actual contractor itself, and that's the cost of construction.
So all pre-construction and construction of the BRT?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Second question. How do passengers pay their fares? Or how are fares collected on the BRT system?
This, we would hope that they would be collected in the same manner as the service that we just described. The, we would like to go to an electronic system with a fare card also for those that are unbanked. And there are two choices. Basically, you can have fare boxes on the platforms. However, the experience of the streetcar was that, you know, there was problems with that. I could let Matt speak to that. But there are a lot of maintenance issues and also security issues with fare payment on the platform. We have seen, and there are studies that show, that doing a tap-to-pay service, where there's a little round box and basically you put your phone up to it and you tap and then board.
So you tap your phone or your card?
Or your card.
As you enter on whatever door you're entering on the bus?
It's on the platform.
On the platform.
Uh huh. And also, since we met last, the City of Cincinnati extended their ordinance that applies to the streetcar, which basically says that if you're in a boarding zone, you must have a paid fare or be boarding the vehicle. So we would be able to identify people who, you know, have not paid for their fare if they were in the area, and they could be asked to relocate to another location.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Of course.
How do we ensure, just to be frank, how do we ensure fare compliance? I mean, I've ridden on systems where you tap on a platform and then get on. And frankly, I was a visitor and I think I didn't pay my first ride because I didn't understand how it worked.
Didn't know how to do it, yeah.
And I'm especially worried because these are our highest-frequency corridors, where we have pretty good transit service, including a pretty good fare recovery. I would assume the bus routes that run on these corridors today have pretty good fare recovery rates. How do we make sure that we maintain that in this, with this new service?
I'll take that one. And, I mean, Sharon explained it very well. And in short, that discussion is still going. We're not at that point to finalize all the fare payment options. To your point and to Sharon's point, and one option is to scan, once you're on the platform, your pass. But to add to your question, then, how are we going to verify that? One solution is to have, you know, checkers randomly check, you know, the certain trips, rides, and so on. And we're not saying this is the route we're going to take. That discussion is still to be had. Right now, they're focusing more on the technical aspects of the stations, the design, the technology of the signal priority and so on and so forth. But there are different methods and we will be sharing, you know, all of that with you in due time.
I would suggest that that is as important to prioritize now as the station design, signal priority, all of that, so.
Are we in, doing any research on the credit card payment and the wallet payment?
Doing any research?
Because we don't currently do it, so. Where are we in the discussion?
You're referring to open payment, where you could just tap a credit card or tap your watch or tap your phone and just use your own banking system, yeah. Open payments are part of our roadmap. Beyond, the first step is ABT, Account-Based Ticketing and Fare Capping. And it's in our roadmap over the next year and a half to, there are pros and cons to that in terms of boarding time and things like that. So there's some decisions that need to be made and some research that needs to be done, but it's absolutely on our roadmap.
I have a comment and a question. My comment is, I really like the smaller canopy for the business districts where appropriate. I think that's really nice and thank you for listening to the communities who expressed a desire in that. I think that's going to help with the visual look and feel in those tight business districts. And then my question is about how bicyclists navigate this new street design. I've been to, most recently, the event at the library and I've seen all the, you know, the street designs. And I'm unsure how a cyclist navigates in this new world order. Could you comment on that and how we're working with the city to ensure that in these corridors, it's clear if you're on a bike, how you, what lane you're supposed to be in? Are we going to be enhancing shareos, you know, the infrastructure for cyclists at the same time? Thank you.
Absolutely. And as a project partner, we are very much working with the City of Cincinnati to focus on two of their major concerns also, which is pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. From a station infrastructure is kind of where we've been focusing the last six months. We are looking at adjacency for other mobility options, like a red bike or also the scooter availability. So those are all things that will come later. But in terms of the lanes, if there is an existing bike lane, there will continue to be a bike lane on the streets where the bus rapid transit is. And that, there are options on where the placement of those bike lanes could be. They can either be inside the curb of the bike, of the bus lane, or they can be on the outside of that. And we haven't gotten to that level of design to have that specification. But we're certainly most interested in making sure, you know, that everything that's operated in the streets is safe. And of course, the City of Cincinnati, that is their jurisdiction and authority. So we'll be working with them.
So if there's, if there's not a bike lane, which, you know, there won't be a bike lane in a lot of the parts of the corridor, are we also looking at how we just make it clear to a cyclist, like where you're supposed to be?
Absolutely, absolutely.
While we're doing this work, it just seems like this is low-hanging fruit. Let's, like, address this at the same time.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that that's addressed in our signal and traffic plans.
Thank you.
Payment markings.
What are we considering stakeholders to be? Who are those actual people?
Organizations, anyone basically that's not a, just an individual person. So other stakeholders would include all of the community councils, which we've been going to their meetings feverishly. Any association that has requested for us to, you know, come meet with them or any organization where we have an intersection with. Like, for example, we will be meeting with the Trails folks, Wade and now, Tri-State Trails, thank you. I was going to say, now I can't remember their name. But Tri-State Trails, we've met with Good Sam, we've met with UC Health, we've met with Children's Hospital. I've mentioned the Community Councils, 3CDC in downtown, as well as the Port Authority.
I don't, I'm not being a negative Nancy, I promise. And I'm not diminishing the work that you all have put in. You've done truly an excellent job. I see the work. My concern, though, is, is, you know, as I attended the Avondale, the Avondale presentation, only one person from Avondale, as in terms of an actual resident, attended that session. So I'm interested in a few things. One, what we do once we learn that, or do we know that? Because you wouldn't know that information unless you asked, you actually asked and you knew. And I just had the advantage of knowing so many other people from different organizations, but not, but trying to kind of pinpoint the residences, the residential folks, and then also the business community, which I'm familiar with in that Avondale Town Center, whom were absent, aside from one that was actually, you know, procuring food, but was not literally inside the location for the presentation. So I'm interested in a few things. One, what are the actual numbers for resident, residential folks and business owners of the different events that actually occurred that's in their, in their jurisdiction? And if we have numbers on those. And then two, what happens when you see that that, that participation is low? And what do you, what do we put in place? Or what do we do in order to enhance their participation and engagement and get their feedback? Because I think theirs is extremely valuable. And then, those would be the only two for right now.
Okay. I will have to come back with the exact numbers. I don't have that with me, but I assume our public engagement team can collect those for us. But I will tell you, we have been to Avondale Community Council at least four times in the last six months. They love to have me out to their meetings. I've been to their executive board meeting, I've been to their business meeting, which I, my understanding, they're getting a group of people back together. And then I've, we had our, you know, we've had our open houses there intentionally to try and get additional engagement. We've been to the Avondale Business Development Corporation as well. And we have representatives on the Stakeholder Advisory Group. From a pure residence, well, from a business owner's standpoint, our team has gone door-to-door and knocked and provided flyers for each of our open houses. So it's unfortunate that we didn't have as many there. I think there's, you know, additional work, obviously. We'll continue to do that and seek input because Avondale is, of course, a very important community for us to be going through. They're very transit-dependent, number one. So we would love to get additional feedback.
And so in terms of the structure, the meeting that you attended there in Avondale was the Stakeholder Advisory Group, which has one representative from organizations throughout both corridors, right? So all the neighborhood community councils and so on and so forth was there. It was not necessarily a public outreach event for the neighborhood. Those are the events that Sharon was talking about, going to community council and having open houses and things like that in the neighborhood. And we can get those numbers for you. So I just want to make that distinction. And then in addition, in terms of the project structure, there is the, you know, the design team and the group that meets every two weeks that goes into all of the details that's represented by the city. And those are more the technical groups. And your Stakeholder Advisory Group that you went to is that organizational representation throughout the whole city. And then we go and do public outreach at specific station locations and neighborhoods. So I think we owe you the data on the public outreach in those corridors.
Okay, thank you so much. And then I think there was, there may be an opportunity to elevate or enhance the rapid element of the BRT for people that are watching and listening. Because I'm not sure that it, that it connects us as quickly as we, as we need it to for answering the question of what makes it rapid.
Okay.
So that they know that immediately and why, why we are, why it is a BRT.
Okay, absolutely.
Kelsey, are you asking about the structure?
Chelsea.
Chelsea, are you asking about the structure in front of the Avondale Town Center?
I'm not asking about the structure. You mean this last question? You mean this last question? I'm asking, I'm just making an observation that when you listen to the presentation, you may not, I don't think you quickly catch on to the why it's rapid and why it's, why you need elevated platforms, why you need these locations, and what makes it more speedy.
Yeah. Our church is one of the four churches that have taken over the town center with community builders, and it came up in the meeting and talked with Sandra Mitchell, who's the president. And they're all in favor of it. They support it. Unfortunately, I guess wasn't a lot of people at the meeting, but from what she said, the Avondale Community Council supports it.
Yeah, I talked to Sandra as well. They do. I'm not saying they don't support it, but if there are opportunities for us to make sure that we engage with residential folks, you've got the country meat market, there's no sign on the door that says, hey, we're gonna have a meeting here and such and such, or this is what's happening, or this is what's coming to this town center. Those things are just nice from a marketing approach. I think that we do an excellent job in terms of our marketing. I just think that there's opportunities to do that a tad bit better so that we can have as much buy-in and participation as possible, especially in vulnerable communities. That's all.
I know Neil is patient to say something, but if I may just piggyback on that to reiterate, you're absolutely right, Chelsea, and we do that once we have these community meetings. We do have the signs on the sidewalks, directing people to the location and the meeting and so on. But to Andy's point, that particular meeting last week or the week before was the stakeholder meeting, which is held quarterly. Back in February, it was held at the Union Terminal. And this time, we decided that we want to take it to the neighborhoods. So moving forward, we're gonna move them to the neighborhoods. It was, you know, that's our quarterly stakeholders' meeting. But you have a great point, and we're aligned in terms of how marketed it and so on. Sorry, Neil.
I'm gonna let Ms. Ma strip ahead of me.
I was just gonna offer, not to shoot Northside's horn, but we actually have a, what we call an ad hoc committee. So that way, like, folks that aren't available for these different meetings and outreach events have one point person and/or group that they can go and talk amongst themselves as Northsiders. Here's where our concerns are, here's what, you know, we're thinking. And then that one point person can then go to the stakeholder meetings and kind of communicate on behalf of the larger, you know, population. So just throwing that out there in case any other community is interested in also taking some leadership in ensuring that their concerns are represented.
I was gonna shift the topic a little bit. So we have had some issues, I think, downtown in enforcing bus-only lanes, making sure they remain open for buses. Have we thought about if we're having trouble with that in the downtown corridor? I imagine we're gonna have as much, if not more, trouble when we expand outward. Have we thought about how we're going to enforce that and our partners to help us do that?
That's still under discussion. There are technologies out there specifically for that. Some of that technology has been implemented in cities and, you know, like in Washington, DC, and Atlanta, and New York, and so on. And that's part of the discussions we're having regarding the intelligent transportation systems component of this project. But you're right, because that's gonna be a critical factor in the performance of BRT.
Absolutely.
Can I just, oh, a question, go ahead.
So Sharon, you mentioned station name changes, which is, I would just be interested at some point in a summary of changes or as sort of that feedback comes and then we make tweaks to the project, summarizing that and sharing it with the board. I don't think we need a presentation every single time. This has been super valuable, but I would just love to know, because I do get calls sometimes saying, hey, what's going on with the amount of bus-only lanes? Or, hey, what's going on with this specific station? Getting some, and I'm always happy to pick up the phone and call someone on staff, but getting some sort of regular cadence of, here's a tweak, here's a change, because we are all out in different parts of the community. And I found myself caught flat-footed a couple times, saying, oh, I don't actually know that that's changed. And that would just be valuable to me. I don't know if it would for others, but some sort of summary would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Get in the weeds with us and trust that, like, that'll help us be better advocates for this project.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of that going on, and it's a good thing. So a lot of our communities are starting to ask questions more about BRT. Why? You've been out there. You've been talking to communities. You've been presenting information, and then people get interested. They get curious. They don't always have the question at that time, but a lot of them are coming to the board and asking, what's going on with this? What's going on with this? What's going on with this? And we need to be able to answer those questions quickly, effectively, efficiently, to continue the momentum, right? We've got a lot of work to do, so every bit of information, you know, how's signal priority going, right? How are fares working? How are bus-only lanes working, right? The elements that make this system work, you know, help us know them so that we can be strong advocates and push this forward. And I think it's really not only valuable just for our conversations, but actually for the success of the project too, right? If we know how these work and we can allay concerns or even build enthusiasm, you know, we're gonna be even more successful as an organization. So thank you for that and thank you for the continued communication, including on specifics. Now, we can also go to the sessions and learn a lot there and ask questions as well, so keep us informed about any of those opportunities.
Sure. Just make a final note here.
Yeah.
Sharon makes it look really easy. I just really want to thank everybody who's been involved in this project, because it is thousands and thousands and thousands of our, from everybody, from this agency, almost every department is involved, our consultants, you know, WSP and their subs, but also the city. You know, we can't do this without the city. They have been tremendous partners, and I need to point out Matt Holmes. Stand up, Matt. He's crucial to this project. And there are so many people, and, you know, as I said, Sharon just makes it look easy in terms of, you know, where we are and how, you know, we've gotten here. But again, I really appreciate everybody's help on this project.
I think there are also a lot of people in the communities that are less formally supporting it, people in the stakeholders group, but also the person in Northside, who's the contact. And we should continue to recognize them, give them credit for the work they're doing. They're important champions for this work.
I just want to be explicit in my ask of an FAQ, just having that on hand rather than a summary.
Yep.
Great. We have some, and we also just created a really nice station booklet that explains all of the different elements that are on a station. So I'll make sure that you all get a briefing packet with all of that in the meantime.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, you know, there's so much information. We'll have a discussion as staff in terms of how do we provide the board with the information they need when they need it and also not overwhelm you all with information. As Hillel mentioned, the quantity of data that's generated every week is massive, right? So work with us on that over the coming months, and we'll try to get that balance just right and make sure that you can go as deep as you want, but also not overwhelm you with, because if we start overwhelming groups with information, then they turn it off, right? So we'll work on that balance and we'll communicate together through it.
I think to say the quiet part out loud a little bit, from people out in suburban areas that don't use Metro as much, that will help to dispel a lot of misinformation about what isn't happening with this project as well. So information will be key to help me specifically spread accurate information about what is happening.
That's perfect. And I think another thing to think about this project is it's iterative, right? It started with kind of, you know, the magic marker lines on a map, and people said, well, where are the stations gonna go? Well, we'll get there. Well, now we're there in terms of station location. Exactly what's gonna happen with this lane in this area, we're starting to get to that level of detail. So we constantly iterate and refine. And so what we don't know today, we might know two weeks from now. So there's also a little bit of patience, because we don't necessarily have 100% of the answers right now, because we're still at 30% decide.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the update and this continued work on this important project. All right. Ridership.
All right. I'll make it quick, because it's all good news. And thank you, Sharon, by the way. Fixed route ridership for the month of April was 1.2 million, just over 1.2 million, another great month in terms of performance, despite the fact that we, you know, didn't implement some of the service changes that we were supposed to implement due to lack of drivers. It is compared to last year's April, it is just, you know, over 5% higher as well. So that's been great. To date, we have ridership total of 4.3 million. Next slide, please. On access ridership, again, that service sees some growth as well. About 15,700 trips were performed in the month of April, 8.4% higher than last year's April. To date, year-to-date, 57,000 trips were performed on the access service. Next slide, please. Metro Now, again, still that trend. It is slightly lower than last month, but, you know, April is a day shorter than March, so it is pretty, still pretty healthy. Taking that into consideration, it would have been similar or slightly higher than March, but it is still performing very, very, very well. And year-to-date, over 41,000 trips have been performed on Metro Now. And just as a reminder, in a few days, we will launch the third zone at Forest Park, and the plan is by the end of the year to launch the fourth zone as well in Blue Ash. Next slide. In terms of productivity, the numbers look great. On local service, the productivity or passengers per hour is higher than the budget. It's at 16.3 passengers per hour compared to budget of 15.9. Express, even though it's not the budget, but it is much higher than previous months. Again, and this is because we're seeing a trend, you know, ridership on express service has been climbing for the past few months, and we expect that trend to continue with higher numbers on the express service. On access, it's just short of two, about 1.99 passengers per hour, 0.2 points lower than budget. Metro Now is 3.6 passengers per hour, which is pretty good compared to other services in the country. The planning team has been doing a deep dive into the Metro Now, and soon, within the next month or two, will be sharing with you some of the recommended KPIs for Metro Now, so we can track it just like we track the other services as well. Next slide. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Hillel. Moving over to our service quality piece of this report, we start going through our on-time performance, and first is our fixed route on-time performance. And you can see that we did not make the goal, and we had a little bit of a dip there. There are several factors. One, I think that we all have seen, and that is the increase in traffic. There are apparently a lot more people going to work now on a daily basis, because we're seeing much more congestion and we're working through that. That's combined with, we continue to have a shortage of operators, which also affects our ability to provide on-time performance. So we continue to work at these pieces. On our next slide, you'll see our access on-time performance. We actually were slightly above our goal for access on-time performance, so we're happy with that, and we've seen a nice rebound there with access service. As we go to the next one, you'll see Metro Now, and that's also a very strong area for us, and that is picking up people within five minutes of the time that we've provided to them for pickup. On our fixed route missed trips, we are seeing, we continue to have a good trend, and we really manage this tightly, but we are about 20 operators short during the month of April. So we did see some increase in our missed trips along with traffic congestion, so it's a combination of those things. But on the bright side, we do have a very large operator training class right now on the fixed route side, so we anticipate being able to add additional operators in very soon. You can see customer service reports. Really happy with our performance in this area. You've seen how we have improved the performance over the past 12 months, and we stay focused on this. We did create a new service quality function that controls both the customer service piece and works very closely with operations management to keep these numbers on the positive side. Fixed route miles between mechanical service interruptions is a piece that we continue to work on. We work on this with also Gillig, our manufacturer. We run into some issues with our emission systems, which Gillig and Cummins are seeing across the country, but we continue to work on this to improve our numbers here and improve our fleet reliability. And that's the service quality piece of the report. If there are any questions.
Casey?
Yeah, Bill. I want to make sure I get the name right this time, Bill. Okay. Are drivers told, you know, as relates to on-time performance, if someone's crossing the street waving their hands, trying to stop the bus, but they just keep going, is it because of on-time performance? Or I guess if they did it several times, that would really be all, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a combination of, it could be because the operator doesn't see that individual. If they see that individual and they're close, they're supposed to wait for those individuals. But there are lots of things that an operator is dealing with, so there is that possibility that they don't actually see that person. And you can see that sometimes when we pull a bus video, you'll see that we think it looks obvious that the driver should see that person, but they're also monitoring all the passengers onboard to make sure they're in a seated position. They're checking for traffic, they're merging back in, so they're also managing a lot of pieces of information. But yes, if they see someone who obviously wants the bus and is approaching the bus, they're supposed to wait for them. Yeah.
I think I have a very wild left-field question, kind of embarrassed to even ask it, but here we go. So at what point, we have seen an uptick in traffic. My daughter's 16 now, and I almost had an absolute heart attack. She had me on the highway yesterday, and I was just losing my mind becoming my parents. And one of the things, the one of the things that was making me really upset was, there were so many people. And there, I mean, it's like, you have a house, especially suburban folks, I don't know why you guys have to have a car for every adult or wannabe adult, but there are a lot, there is a lot more traffic. At what point does, are the route times spread out? Because of just, because of the environmental factors, the things that we are just purely dealing with as things go on? Does that make, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Keep trying to hold on to where we are, knowing that there's a lot of different outside factors that are just happening. They're just, they just exist, and they, it's not gonna go backward.
Right.
It's going to get even heavier. So is that a...
It's a great question. I mean, fundamentally, on-time performance is your perform, our performance based on the schedules that we write. So we periodically have to adjust those schedules if they're not meeting the real-world traffic conditions. And Hillel and his team, they can talk about that, but they're constantly looking at timetables for every single route based on actual performance and using Google data and all those things. And we continually roll out adjustments. There were adjustments that were rolled out this weekend on Sunday. I think it was maybe over a dozen routes that were no major changes, but just tweaks to the schedule. So if you were on the number four, you needed to pick up a new schedule because they were timed. because there were timing adjustments made to that route to align exactly what you're talking about, to align with the real world as it constantly changes in a moment.
You guys are on top of it, I was just saying.
That's a core question, not out of left field. It's a good question to ask all the time, yes.
I have a couple of quick comments. So just as a general statement, while we always want to be, you know, meeting our on-time performance, just a reminder for those of you who have to train the trainers to remind, on-time performance should always come secondary to customer service and safety. So that, never, never try to meet on-time performance for leaving passengers behind or not making sure they're all seated or strapped in properly, mobility devices, things like that. Second comment is on that very last slide there, the miles between mechanical service interruptions. So that fundamentally is just money that's out the door because we're having to repair buses more frequently than we want to be doing that, right? Are we thinking about improvements that need to be made in order to meet those goals? And what are those improvements?
Yes, one of the things that we actually did in the last year was we actually hired a consultant to come in and look at our maintenance processes. We're actually working on evaluating our structure, how we do the maintenance, how we oversee the maintenance, and looking at all of those processes. So we're in the middle of that evaluation and taking those action steps now.
Thank you.
Very good question.
Once that, once that analysis has been concluded, it'd be great to bring that back and then dollarize it for us.
Interesting to see the pair of transit numbers up for the month. I don't mean to be just humorous, but the first thought that popped into my mind was, wow, EZ Connect is really taking off. And then I realized we didn't address that, or I didn't address that in my comments. And I was checking, it looks like Daryl may address it. But for those of you who didn't know, we launched an amazing new pilot in the past month. And this is allowing us to connect across counties and into Kentucky. Immense amount of work over four, although it seemed like five or six years. Seems like an amazing amount of time has gone into this. And it is to improve OTP and customer service and make sure that our passengers and the passengers of other systems in our region are able to get to where they need to go with one seat. And I was staggered by the rider who was at the launch event and the story of leaving, I think it was northern Kentucky, having to transfer onto our system and then transfer again in Butler County. And I think she said she left at like 6:00, 7:00 AM and got home at 6:00 or 7:00 PM for a one-hour appointment in Butler County. And with this new system with EZ Connect, I mean, just, what, 20% of the time, 30% of the time? I don't know the exact number, but staggeringly better day for her. So we have 40 passengers in the pilots, or approximately 40. And I just wanted to call that out. I know that that is not the bump in access ridership for the month. But we will see some increase in ridership because of this, but a lot more value in on-time performance and customer service for some of our very important riders.
You're right, thank you for that, Blake. And, yeah, so we launched that about a couple of weeks ago, and they're averaging about, or three weeks ago, about two to three trips a week, which is not a huge number, but at least people are taking advantage of it. They're using it wisely. The, probably the, to me, the most wonderful news is over half of the trips are being taken across jurisdictions to meet friends and go to restaurants. So this is a venue for people to enjoy and have, you know, fun and so on. So it's not like they're using it desperately to get to a medical appointment or so. They're just taking it to meet friends and go to restaurants.
Cheers to that.
All right. Cheers to that, very good. Any other questions on ridership, service quality? All right, if not, draw it out as long as you possibly can, Daryl. Metro on the move.
Last go round. We're excited to announce that on June 6th at 10:30 AM at the Forest Park Krogers, we're celebrating the launch of our Metro Now Zone 3. Zone 3 will operate in Forest Park and Pleasant Run beginning June 8th. So that is three out of six, and we are really excited about that. Congratulations to our board member and my friend, Jay Betty, who was recognized by Hamilton County Commissioners with the Jay Betty Day in Hamilton County on May the 24th. You all know we signed an agreement with Dubai to share information. The gentleman from Dubai, he is their head of Roads and Transport Authority. Adele Shakiri was here in Cincinnati a couple of weeks ago, looking at our system, talking to our people. I'm really impressed with a lot of the things that we do here. That collaboration between us and Dubai is really strong, and we really appreciate the constant communication we have with them. We also learned that next year, they're gonna have flying taxis. And so, you know, we're really interested to see how flying taxis works.
Daryl, when I was at that meeting, Adele was like, you wanna, he said, you wanna test my?
I will not be one of the first passengers to get on a flying taxi. Also, we'll remind you that June is Safety Month. Every day here at Metro, we focus on safety. Each June, we join systems across the country to celebrate National Safety Month. Again, thank you very much. It literally has been my honor to serve, and I am excited to see what you all do in the future.
Thank you so much. All right. I'm gonna move that we move into executive session now under Section 121.22G1 to consider appointment, employment, dismissal.